All right, good evening and welcome to the December 3 meeting of the ZBA. I'll go over a few things before we start the meeting tonight. All meetings are held in accordance with Massachusetts general law. Before we begin, I ask you to silence all your cell phones. If you have any conversation we had, please move yourselves from the room. You can talk in the hallway if need be. Comes to exiting the room, please do that quietly. Let's see here, tonight, we have several continuations. We have two continuations at 5:30. We have one continuation at 6:00. We have three open meetings. Our new applications. CBA is held with conducting hearings for special permits, variances, and appeals from the building commissioner. And can introduce the board to our far end. We have Mark Cool, who is an associate member. To my immediate right, or skipping over one, we have our vice chair, Ken Foreman. I'm Terrance Horry. I'm usually the clerk, but for the first couple of continuations, I will be the acting chair, since our chairwoman Kimberly Bealyn is currently stuck in traffic. To my left, we have Ed Van Kuren. He is a full voting member of the board. And we also have Paul Murphy at the end. He is also a full voting member. We have Sarai Bhutre, who is the zoning administrator, and Draude Guy-Schechter, who is our recording secretary. So we'll start and get right into it. We have, starting with our continuation, application 90-15 Comstock-Vicksgerald, 16 Nantucket Ave. And there will be four voting members, myself, Ed Van Kuren, and Paul Murphy, Mark Cool. And I will appoint Paul Murphy as the clerk for this application. Paul, is there anything new for the application?
We do, yes. We have some revised plans submitted 11:30 and 12:02. And we have a letter of opposition from Suzanne Turcot. And that's all the new information.
Thank you. For the record, his name is Tom Bunker with BSS Design. I'd also just like to come up with a huge question on 12:02.
They were your plans from 12:01, but we received them on 12:02. Revised plans. Okay. The bulk, excuse me.
Bulk.
It was the bulk.
Bulk calculations.
I apologize. Bulk calculations.
Lot coverage.
Sorry, Paul.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Three weeks ago, it was three weeks ago, we had a hearing which we requested to continue after some discussion, so that we could make some revisions. There were concerns over the amount of whether the third floor would constitute a bedroom, how much space, whether it's a loft or a bedroom. And there was a concern about the setback where we had a stair tower making use of the footprint of what had been a bulkhead to the septic, approximately four feet from the property line. The designer has, a ton of more, has changed the plans where before this stair tower came back, this was the bulkhead, and the cellar access over here, the stair tower in this location, closer to the property line. So it's been rotated and moved to go out up and over the mechanical road. So it's sticking toward the backyard a little more. See, on the site plan, on this site plan, where there had been a four-foot setback from the property line, the distance is 3.5 feet. And we had reduced the level to four feet before. Now, by rotating the stair tower, increased that setback to 8.3 feet. Added four feet to the setback, decreasing non-conformity in that location. Couldn't quite get it to meet the zoning requirement, but we made an improvement in that location.
Sorry.
We came out this way, it's closer to the septic system, but because that stair tower will be on posts, there's no setback requirement for a structure on posts to the leaching part of the septic system. So we could do that and get that closer in that way. Other than that, the site plan didn't change, except that it decreased the lot coverage, changing that decrease to by 16 square feet, which, I can't remember it. Changed the percent coverage by a small amount and decreased the bulk by a small amount, but not enough to change its spot in the order. I think we had it as, one, two, three, four, the six. It's 44.9% is our calculation of the bulk of this building now, or before it was over 45%. The next one below it is 44.7%. So it's roughly equivalent, sort of tied with between sixth and seventh place, which is, the other one is 15 Pennsylvania Ave, around the corner, in the same neighborhood. So anyway, keeps the same spot in the bulk calculation. The other change, when this stair tower got changed around, it decreased the space on the first floor and the second floor because of the rearrangement. So the laundry room had to move from the first floor up to the third floor, the loft. So, you know, being up here, the laundry is up here now. So I would say putting that up there would certainly make that space less likely to be considered a bedroom, because there's a sort of a, more or less, public, not public, but a family use on this level, where doing laundry is less likely for somebody to think that this loft area has the requisite privacy to be considered a bedroom. It already didn't, we believe, because this is an open, all of this is an open stairwell, and it's open here to the hallway below as it was before, but it's actually open a little bit more than it was before. And with the laundry facilities, I think previously this had been changed from a full bath to just the powder room and the wet bar facility here. Because we just had the changes, the architectural changes just received on Monday, we didn't have a chance to get to the Board of Health, because there wasn't a hearing on Monday. It was last week. Oh, no, there was, I think there was one on Monday, but we didn't get a chance to apply, to file for it. We had just gotten the drawings. Anyway, those are the changes we made. Reduced, we increased the setback to the north lot line by four feet and also reduced the, reduced the lot coverage, which reduced that non-conformity slightly. And I believe made this the third floor loft area less likely to be considered, or more definitely not a bedroom, in this change. So I'll hand it over, take any comments, questions you have.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I've got some. Good evening. Since the chair lady is here tonight, some of her questions, one that I didn't see was, have we received the deed restriction file?
The Board of Health agent is by himself, and we have reached out to him several times. I even went down there today and asked him, when he was busy, if he could talk to me. The deed restriction is filed with the Registry of Deeds?
Okay, so it's not...
And I asked, I was asking him too, to sign off on that, but he never made it up to the office.
So it's not in the file?
No, but remember, the Board of Health has to sign off prior to issuance of a building permit.
The other question I have is regarding, I was, you can clarify, but I think I found an inconsistency on the elevation plan, A4. It describes the building height as 31...
Point four.
31.4 inches.
Okay.
From the top of foundation.
From the top of foundation, okay. And then on the site plan in the comment area, it says the building height is 33.33?
Yeah, the 31.4, that's how it was before. The 31.4 is from the top of foundation.
Right.
The 33...
Point three.
I have it on A, I mean, the building height is, the building height is measured from the average grade, not from the top of foundation.
Okay, so the elevation plan, A4, is from the...
Top of foundation.
Top of foundation.
And the top of foundation.
The site plan comment area is making note of 33.33 from grade?
From average grade. That's, I mean, I have the calculation here. The, we have the top of foundation, on this, I can read the commentary right here in the design. So we have the, top of foundation is elevation 13.
Right.
And the average grade is 11. So I take top of foundation and at 13, and add 31 feet, four inches, you get 44.33. That's the elevation of the top of the roof. And subtract from that the average grade.
Average grade being 11.
And you get 33.33.
Okay. Just needed clarification on that. So with the revised lot coverage, trying to become more conforming in its actual footprint, the bulk calculation basically puts it in the same rank?
Yes.
Okay.
Lowered it slightly, but it's still the same rank.
All right. All right, that's all I have.
All right.
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you.
Since our chairwoman is not here, I believe one of her concerns last meeting were some of the rooms on the first floor, I believe it was, one was the office, whether that could be...
On the second floor.
On the second floor, I'm sorry. Whether that could be construed as a bedroom?
It's got a case to open.
Case to open.
Has a case opening.
Four foot wide.
Would the board like to proceed with the application?
Discussion?
Discussion, sure. Mark, do you want to start us off?
In the absence of the chair lady, my concern last time, as well as this time, is for the bulk. I've gone out to that property or that site now five times, trying to get a feel for how 33.33 off grade will fit into the neighborhood. There are large, large in keeping with height, built structures in the immediate neighborhood. However, none have the diminished lot size. And so my feeling, just in general, and I'll throw it out to the board, is the structure as proposed is too big for the lot, just by virtue of bulk.
My feeling on the project is, maybe the first time around, you know, there were some issues with the bedrooms. I think that's been properly addressed. I think the applicant has proceeded in good faith with the revisions to the plan. It's a tough lot. It's a small lot. It did provide a decrease in the non-conformity. The bulk has gone down slightly, although it hasn't changed in rank. But I think this is a good project to go forward.
I agree it's a good project to go forward, and I also think that they've done everything in good faith. And there's other buildings in that street that have been, in that area, could have already been approved by the board for, and see why this one shouldn't be done.
I'm in favor of the project as currently proposed.
I would just add, I mean, just not to parade a dead dog, but we don't make decisions based on good faith. There has to be regulatory instruction, and I think in this circumstance, Tom did revise the lot coverage chart. However, it doesn't change. And since it's rank number six or seven, depending on how you look at it, it doesn't meet the statutory, not the statutory, the wording of average of the neighborhood. And that's, that's what's necessary to, I mean, we're instructed by, I think it's 24068...
24069E.
...to take into consideration size and structures of the average in the neighborhood, how it relates. So, just to throw it out there again, knowing that it's rank six or seven, though, you know, all the good intentions were there, it's still six or seven. So that's, that's all I say on that subject.
I understand what you're saying about the bulk, because it is up there in bulk. And you would say particularly because it's a small lot, but also think because, because it's a small lot, it could be lent a little more leeway. High bulk on a small lot is still a small structure.
Well, I mean, I think, I think what I'm, I'm kind of moving towards in my comments is, there possibly could have been more moderation, instead of going right up to the limit of what we can approve. I mean, you're within a foot and a half, almost two foot of our limit on a small property. And so I'm, I'm just looking for a little bit more moderation, but if everybody else doesn't feel the same...
If it's a small property, it's also the second or third smallest house as a footprint area in the neighborhood. And, you know, because it's a small house on a small lot, you know, it's obvious, well, the only, only way they can go is up. And, you know, it's possible it could have cut the picture.
I think, I think your last, one of your comments, or somebody said it's the way the neighborhood's going. And so I kind of don't necessarily agree with that. Nor should it be going that way, so, but that's...
That's true.
Thank you, Mark. And just to, just for clarification, Mark, when I referenced earlier, the applicant going forward in good faith, obviously, you know, when it comes to the bylaws, you did cite the bylaws, we have to point to something concrete. I did take the decrease in non-conformity into account with my opinion, so.
And the changes.
Just so that's there. Anything else for the board?
No.
All right. Would you like to entertain a motion?
I'll close the hearing. I'll move it for close.
Move to close, okay. Mark moves to close, second by Ed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Hearing is closed. Would the board like to proceed from here? Motion in favor, motion against?
Yes.
Motion, motion in favor?
Second.
So that is a motion in favor by Ed, and that would be...
Excuse me. I hate to interrupt, before you do anything, but you're a four-member board right now. If I, I think in all due respect to the applicant, you can ask the applicant what they want to do, in case this ends up in a three to one. If it ends up in a three to one, then this applicant cannot come back for two years.
Right.
So I don't know how Mr. Cool is going to vote, but before you do take that vote, I suggest you find out either a general consensus or ask the applicant how they want to proceed. I would get a general consensus and then ask them, the applicant has reworked things and brought it back to the board. Things like this have happened. This is the fifth house in the general area that this board has seen in the past two years, I believe. We looked at that, two and a half years. It is in the AE zone, does have to come up to compliance. So all things considered, before you vote, either get a general consensus of the board or talk to the applicant, please. I realize you closed the hearing, so you can either get the consensus and then reopen, however the board would like to proceed, but I think in all fairness to the applicant, the board needs to take into consideration that this applicant cannot come back for two years if this is denied.
All right. And my apologies with the procedure there.
Oh, that's okay.
Sarai being the clerk.
You want to talk amongst the board first, and then possibly reopen, or...
Sure. We do have three members in favor of the application, I think we do. Mark, is there anything...
That would turn me?
That would turn you, to persuade you.
Your last comment, I get the fact that he, there was concessions made, but I don't think, reaching my satisfaction with regard to moderation as far as the bulk structure of the circumstance. So I would say, I don't think there's too much to turn me on.
Okay.
I'd reopen the hearing.
All right. Can I have a motion to reopen the hearing, please?
Yes, reopen it.
Motion by Ed, can I have a second? Second by Mark, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Tom.
So with three, you're saying it's not a...
It's, it's a done deal. It's denied. Three to one is a denial. So you can either ask for a continuance to work on it, or you can withdraw and come back to the board.
Well, it stands now, so Kimberly wouldn't be able to vote either, because she wasn't here for this one.
Correct.
So we'll always have three to one.
Yes. So would you like to withdraw and reapply? I'm sorry, I just, it just so happened that she was stuck in traffic tonight.
How about if I ask for a continuance?
It's still going to be a four?
I know, it won't do any good, but just, you know, probably talk to my client and call you tomorrow with a withdrawal, but just...
And then make a decision? That's absolutely fine. The continuation with, have you seen our schedule lately?
No, I haven't.
I am sorry, I just, it looks like it would be January 21st. I've got a pact, and that's with every week in January having a hearing.
Well, withdrawing and reapplying would be later than that, so...
Okay, so, January 21st, you want to do it at 6:00 PM, board?
January 21st.
Excuse me.
I think I'm wrong.
Is that something you've given me?
Yes.
Mark is out on January 21st. Do I do 5:45 on December 10th? You're obviously not going to be revising the plans, or...
Well, we might. It's either, obviously you'll have to revise the plan or something.
Within January 28th?
Yeah.
January 28th at 6 o'clock, is that okay with the board? Mark, will you be back?
Yes.
January 28th?
Let me...
So if the board would make a motion on that?
All right.
Just before you do, let me look at my schedule real quick.
Yes, I'll be back.
All right. Somebody can make that motion?
I'll make the motion to make the continuance until January 28th at 6 o'clock.
Please.
Second.
All right, so that is a motion to continue the hearing. Application 90-15 is 6:00 PM on January 28th. That was made by Mark, and I think there are two seconds over here. Ed, I'll give it to you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Madam Chair?
Is here. Good timing.
Not your fault.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have a continuation at 6:00 PM.
Yes.
So in lieu of starting up on the second continuation, Paul Glenn?
Paul?
I was going to ask you, since Paul Glenn is present, if we could put that off for another 15 minutes, maybe? Or to continue him at 6:30?
Put Carol off?
To continue Paul Glenn till 6:30.
Okay. Yeah. I think that's fair.
Paul, is that okay?
That way we take the Carol, the 23...
Yes, so would you like to withdraw and reapply? I'm sorry, I just.
How about if I?
It just so happened that she was stuck in traffic tonight.
How, how about if I ask for a continuance, I mean?
It's still going to be a four.
I know, it won't do any good, but just, you know, probably talk to my client and call you tomorrow with a withdrawal, but just, uh.
That's absolutely fine. Uh, the continuation would. Have you seen our schedule lately?
No, I haven't.
I am sorry, I just, it looks like it would be January twenty-first. I've got a pact, and that's with every week in January having a hearing.
Well, withdrawing and reapplying would be later than that, so.
Okay, so, January twenty-first, you want to do it at six P.M., board?
January twenty-first.
Excuse me.
I think I'm wrong.
Is that something you've given me?
Yes.
Mark is out on January twenty-first. Do I do five forty-five on December tenth? Um, you're obviously not going to be revising the plans, or?
Well, we might, I mean, it's either, obviously you'll have to revise the plan or, or something.
Within January twenty-eighth?
Yeah, no.
January twenty-eighth at six o'clock, is that okay with the board? Mark, will you be back?
Yes.
January twenty-eighth.
Let me.
So, if the board would make a motion on that?
All right.
Just, uh, just before you do, let me look at my schedule real quick. Yes, I'll be back.
All right. Somebody could make that motion?
I'll make the motion to, uh, make the continuance until January twenty-eighth at six o'clock.
Please.
Second.
All right, so that is a motion to continue the hearing, application ninety dash fifteen to six P.M. on January twenty-eighth. That was made by Mark, and I think there are two seconds over here. Ed, I'll give it to you. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Is here. Good timing.
Not your fault.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have a continuation at six P.M.
Yes.
So, in lieu of starting up on the second continuation, Paul Glenn. I was going to ask you, since Paul Glenn is present, if we could put that off for another fifteen minutes maybe? Or to continue him at six thirty?
Put Carol off?
To continue Paul Glenn till six thirty.
Okay, yeah, I think that's fair.
Paul, is that okay?
That way we take the Carol, the twenty-three Zell Street, yes, I think that's fair, thanks.
So, the board has to make a motion, and Mr. Glenn, if he agrees.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Make a motion to do it.
To, um, continue the ninety, application ninety-five fifteen to six thirty?
Right.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, I'm allowed to second that, right?
Okay, so that was Ed and Ken, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that means we are now on ninety-one fifteen, Carol, twenty-three Zell Street. Um, this is a continuation as well, and it is myself, T.J. Hury, Ed Van Karen, Paul Murphy, and Mark Cool sitting on these applications. Or this application.
Good evening, Joel Cubic, the Holmes McGrath, just to bring you back up to speed. This is a pre-existing dwelling, not conforming because there are two dwellings on its property. Currently, the, the main house doesn't meet the setback to the, uh, the waters of Buzzard, of Vineyard Sound. And the, the relocation of the house, the, the raising of the, demolishing of the existing house and the reconstruction of a new, um, main house further back outside of the velocity zone is what we're proposing. So, the footprint hasn't changed since the last time you saw it. There was one modification to the steps, um, over here and the layout of those. And, and the steps have been modified to reflect some grading that's also shown on the plan, as well as the, uh, the realignment of a proposed driveway through the carport and, uh, over to Zell Street. So, um, I have some small color plans if anyone would like them.
I'm sure we have the revised plans in the file.
Yes, um, we didn't get a chance to ask the clerk, there are.
Yeah.
Do you want to go through what was submitted?
Yeah, we've got, uh.
And emails from Joel Cubic on Board of Health.
Yeah, we've got revised plans submitted, uh, revised plot plans submitted twelve-one, and revised architectural drawings, um, submitted twelve-one as well. We have a letter from Mimi Gregory, uh, that came in on twelve-three, and what else do we have?
And emails from Joel Cubic regarding Board of Health.
And emails from Joel regarding Board of Health.
Thank you, so let me see, um, if anybody has any questions for you with regard to the new plans. Mark?
With regard to the new plans?
Or anything, anything you want to ask about?
I do have a few. Traffic was brought up to be an issue with neighbors, so my, my question to you, Joel, would be, during construction, all construction vehicles will be.
Yeah.
Required to be on the subject property?
That was mentioned at the last hearing, and I believe that's, uh.
Okay, so you're, uh, um, the, the foundation plan, can you bring that up?
I don't have it up there, but I have, uh.
The only question was, um, that the existing basement is going to remain, correct?
No, 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 no.
It's not.
The entire structure is going to be demolished if it's too close to the water for one.
I disregard that. All right. Looking at the, the site plan, can you tell me, because it's not depicted, um, the, I guess it would be the western edge of the circular driveway. What's the distance between that edge and the, um, property locus va- valley realty trust?
It's approximately two feet, foot and a half, two feet.
Okay, um, and then just verify for me, the existing driveway as it is now is going to be removed, which, um, is adjacent to Westminster Street?
Um, the extension, the, the circular portion of it that's on our property, tho- those concrete pavers are going to be removed.
What, what's, is there anything that's going to take place with that hedge that sits basically in the middle of Westminster Street?
Uh, that, that's been discussed, again, that's off of the property, that's a, a private roadway, um, and would need to be worked out with the neighbors and, and others.
The septic, um, remains, um, ten-bedroom capacity?
We're not changing the existing septic system other than moving the tank, uh, as is shown on the plan.
The screened-in porch, it'll be unheated three-season?
Yes, yes.
Uh, let's see here, so we don't really have a health referral?
Uh, again, I, I noticed this last minute, and I went down to see Dave Carrigan today, and luckily enough, got his ear for a second because he is very busy. But I did bring in this plan and discuss that with him, uh, and his only comment was, even though it's a pervious driveway, he'd like to see that, uh, soil absorption system vented, which is easy enough to do when we.
Okay, so that brings me to the next question, where would the vent be? I mean, the, the reason I ask is, we want to prevent nuisance, and I know those can be very odorous at times.
Uh, they can be, I mean, it can be piped remotely, uh, off into a treat area, uh, towards the hedge there.
Do we have any plan for that?
Typically just say that it's going to be located in the field, um, and it's determined by the installer when they, they do that work. Do you have a preference as to where you'd like to sit?
Well, I mean, personally, um, I would like to see it, um, on the plan, so, I mean, if there's, if there's budding neighbors that might take issue, they would want to know as well. And if I were an abutting neighbor, I would do.
We could, uh, install a carbon filters on them, that obviously, you know, that, that often takes care of any odors, and hopefully there's no odors because that's usually the sign of a system that isn't working completely well. And again, this isn't right into the, the chambers themselves, this would be the stone that, that's surrounding them.
Right, right.
So, there usually isn't much, uh, major air exchange of, of the odorous gases at that point.
Usually. Here. Okay, so that's that. Attic plan, how many square feet in the attic?
I noticed, uh, and that question was brought up earlier, um, I, we don't have an attic plan. There is a lot of cathedral ceilings and vaulted ceilings, there is no real usable attic for storage. I believe there's access hatches as are required by the building code, just because it isn't a closed space, but there's no intent. I mean, especially with this lower level as, as large as it is, there's plenty of storage down there. There's no intent to have any storage or other, um, anything else up in, up in that small attic space.
Okay, so the next question would be, well, I mean, is there an intention to give us a attic plan, or no?
I didn't require it when I got a response from Joel because the hatches will prove that it will remain unfinished, and it's according to the building code.
No heat?
That's fine, yeah, there's no intent to finish that off.
Uh, any idea as to what the ceiling height might be?
Of the attic?
Yes, from the subfloor to the.
At that point, again, there are vaulted ceilings in the second floor, so.
Realize that.
Not the entire area.
That's all my questions for now.
Okay, thank you. Um, T.J.?
Can you touch upon the, I believe there was an issue with the grading?
Uh, there was, uh, the, the architectural plans, and again, this is, um, a kind of a work in process as things have been working out with the other boards and then everyone involved. But, uh, the architectials showed less steps as was, um, indicated last time. That's because they were hoping to do some grading to, because this foundation is now so far out of the ground due to the, the flood zone and the conservation requirements, um, there would be a lot of exposed concrete, so they wanted to, you know, soften that up with some grading, some landscaping around it. That grading is shown on this plan, and, and that's why the steps match the architectials and the elevations.
All right, and a follow-up to that, can you just hit upon, uh, you know, the, the height restriction and, let's see. I believe there was some note about the, uh, the FEMA basement as well.
Sure, um, so the height restriction is from natural grade as it is right now. Doesn't take into any account whatever grading might be done on the site. The, the grading is not to remove us from a, a flood zone area, this is an A-zone, we're not raising this grading above that flood zone base flood elevation. It's, um, just construction type of grading. The existing, I'm sorry, the, the proposed slab on that lower level is at elevation eight. The lowest grade next to that is at seven and a half, therefore it's not technically a basement by the building code. Uh, there would be flood openings, uh, throughout the, the foundation that would allow floodwaters to pass back and forth through that, that whole lower level. And those would have to be within a foot of grade, um, on either the inside or the outside of the structure.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. Ed?
Was there a hearing held with the Conservation Commission?
With this new, we've gotten an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission based on the plan that you saw previously. With this new driveway, uh, we have not gone in front of them, we've talked to the agent. Uh, we can't even apply to amend that existing order of conditions until the sixteenth. So, um, we haven't been able to, to modify that as of yet.
That's all.
Thank you, Ed. Paul?
No questions, thanks.
Okay. And I just have a couple. Was there any consideration, um, just as the screening of the, I know that, that now the driveway's been reworked. Is there any room there for any screening, because I know we've had some, I'm sorry.
Uh, like a fence or vegetation?
Vegetation, I think would be.
That, that could be considered, certainly.
Okay. Is the vegetation that's shown on here just for illustrative purposes, or is it general?
The green, yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not landscape architect.
Right, okay. And I just want to clarify, the ceiling height in the attic, what was that?
Uh, I believe it's seven at the, at the highest point.
Seven feet?
Possibly, uh, and again, there's vaulted areas below and cathedral ceilings, so there isn't, that's not the entire, um, floor space of, of the second floor. There's portions of that that would be seven.
Okay, um, I guess the question that I have, or the concern that I have about the plan, and it was the same as last time, and it's, still exists today, that you're working from a thirty-five-foot maximum height, and then you're kind of just working within that, kind of whatever you can do. So, you're not coming to us with the, a, a building height of thirty-four feet. So, could you just come, or, you know, another set building height? So, could you just walk me through the each floor's height, and how high you have to be above grade, and, and what the exact plans are?
Do you have a, a better answer?
If, yeah, if you're going to speak, then you just need to come up and provide your name and.
My name is Neil Carron, I represent the building contractor. Uh, the, the prevailing grade, the pre-existing average grades begins at eight, and it would make the maximum height forty-three. With the slab at, at eight feet, the basement, or the, the storage area slab at eight feet, there's roughly seven feet to the bottom of the framing of the first floor. Top of the first floor would be at sixteen or eight feet above if we, I don't know, it's difficult if you want, it's work in terms of the thirty-five feet.
So, you're totaling up to thirty-five here, okay, all right.
We're starting at eight and going to forty-three, but let's say eight is now zero. So, it would be seven feet in the lower level, about a foot of framing, and a nine-foot ceiling on the first floor, another foot of framing, and an eight-foot ceiling on the second floor, another foot of framing, and then between seven and eight feet. We, as you recall, we did with the, in order to meet the conservation Falmouth, uh, velocity flood elevation, we eliminated a third floor, there was originally a bunk room on the third floor, it was eliminated. And the master bedroom suite on that end was converted to a full cathedral, and there's actually a dormer that lights the, uh, the bedroom from above, it's, it's floating in the, uh, in the roof. So, the attic to the thirty-five feet is somewhere between seven and eight feet. And, uh, and we would propose to, what we've done, many of these are just doing one now, uh, on Foster Street, where we do the elevation certificate when we get the ridge frame, or we measure up from a known point, and do a confirmation of the, within the thirty-five-foot maximum height level, and get a certified elevation certificate, so there's no question about exceeding the zone.
And you would get that certified elevation certificate prior to filling the grade around the base?
Yes, yeah, eight feet, it begins at eight, that's a locked-in number. And the, the, the way it's set up now, it can, there, there doesn't have to be any excessive grading. It can be veneering at the foundation, but, uh, it's really more of an architectural, landscape, architectural decision, and how it's on the water side, how it, uh, meets conservation restriction on the next.
Okay.
But we could build it as-is, the way it is now.
Okay, great.
And it's thirty-five feet.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, that was all of my questions, three.
Joel, did, uh, Conservation Commission mandate any mitigation plannings on this lot, and are they shown? They did not.
No, we're actually, uh, reducing the amount of impervious area within their jurisdiction because they are moving back from the water. So, we're losing like two hundred and fifty-five, uh, seven hundred and fourteen square feet. What would have been plantings were, were not.
So, that's why there's no mitigation, all right, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Is there any, um, public comment on this, anybody want to speak in, in favor of this? Does anybody want to speak in opposition? Okay.
I'm Mimi Gregory, I write to you all every day. Um, mitigation planning, yes, there is, the U, the tree from, uh, there was a mitigation planting when the cottage was built, and Conservation said that you had to move, that tree had to be moved or mitigated.
Is that through this, are you talking this project, or? But what I'm asking for is any additional plantings, not what's existing, any additional.
Okay, just as long as that, that tree.
Right, no, I understood that.
It's a continuing mitigation problem, I guess.
Right.
The setback from the, this is a question, uh, the existing leaching field, which is, it's double the size of what it was. Does that have to be ten feet from the property line?
That's Board of Health, and I think he got clarification from the Board of Health on that.
Uh, it's an existing system that's in there, we've got, uh, better records of the as-built, um.
It just doesn't mean that isn't.
If you, so, so how will handle, excuse me, so we'll have, we'll have Mimi ask her questions to us, and then we'll have you answer the questions, and that way it's clearer for the record as well. No, that was, I could have swapped it before, so.
All right, I, I question the diagram for the leaching field because the original plot plans, um, that were submitted, the leaching field, and I was there when they put it in, um, is half that size, and it's up towards the cottage. If you want to look at the left.
She means the length of it, right.
And, isn't it a ten-foot setback from property?
I think so.
Oh, again, that's health, so.
And it's existing, Mimi?
Yes, but the other half of it is not existing, that they have proposing now, but that's health. I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm, until everything, you know, is all, all the ducks are in a row, I would ask for a continuation, I just, I think it's hard.
I, let me see if anybody has questions for you, is everybody else sat? I know I do. So, um, you heard me just ask, since the driveway's been relocated, would, would screening be preferable to you as an abutter? Or are you concerned about water view, and you'd prefer the less screening, the better, it's just.
I'm not terri, I certainly don't want any screening on the Westminster side because they're already taking about a third of our view that way. I mean, if she wants to put, you know, a low hedge or something or other there, but it's going to be raised.
Right, I, I guess I'm asked.
There's going to be a gully going towards the property line because our property is higher.
My, I guess my only concern would be, or what I'm viewing as a concern, is where the, the driveway's been relocated towards Zell Street. And I was just asking.
It's that way, that.
Doesn't bother you, or?
No.
Okay.
No, all right. We don't have any, you don't kind of view that way, and a garage over there.
Okay.
All right, um, I think that's all. I still, I'm not sure I totally understand the, um, the thirty-five-foot elevation. I thought you started thirty-five at the average grade, which is eight. But then if they fill or do grading up against this basement, then. But then if they fill or do grading up against this basement, then did they start measuring from the top of that grade?
No.
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 Well, that's what the elevation looks like.
It might be an old, I don't know if that's an old elevation. This measured, so the 35 feet is measured from the average grade. So, that's the height of the structure will be 35. But they won't, they won't be building up, and what the testimony just was, they won't be building up the grade and then measuring that. The eight foot is the, is set. And then, yes.
I don't see how you can do this when Conservation hasn't signed off on the...
We, yeah, just to answer that, we have a different purview, so we can condition that they need to receive conservation.
Right.
But we're looking at it for different things. We're looking at it from the zoning perspective.
And the same with Health.
Yes.
Health hasn't signed.
Yes. Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments? Do you want to address anything or...
Does Joel want to address Mimi's?
Concerns?
As far as the tree, that is a condition. There's an existing tree. It's not a mitigation plant that's new for this approval. There is an existing tree that's close to the footprint of this proposed house location, and it needs to be moved. And if that doesn't survive, there's a requirement that it's replaced with equal value trees. As far as the septic system, it is a little bit bigger as it's shown because we had tie cards of the as-built, which gave us one dimension. We received the Title V inspection that actually had the dimensions and showed what type of structures those were because we wanted to make sure that that was H20 capacity leaching system. And that showed it as being much larger, which calculates out to be the 10-bedroom capacity. And that those dimensions were shown in that Title V. So, that's why it's shown as it is on there. And then, we're not modifying that soil absorption system other than possibly putting an event as required by the Board of Health, but we're not relocating anything there. We're not increasing the size of it. We're not increasing the number of bedrooms or anything that go to it. So, I understand the question about the setback to the property, and that's an existing system.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Sounds great. Let's see how the board would like to proceed. I think we want to have discussion, or Mark, I think you had the most questions, so if you want to, if you're...
All the, okay. I guess we'll discuss.
Yeah, we can discuss. Or do you think we're ready to close?
I don't have any more questions.
Okay. So, does anybody want to make?
So, I'll move to close.
Okay. Okay. So, that was Mark and Ed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And discussion, Mark?
I mean, the revision, and now with the explanation by Neil with regard to the elevation certification, which makes me feel much better. I think I could move forward on this project. I think, well, I mean, we'll make findings, but that's where I'm at.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable with it. I think it looks great.
I agree.
TJ?
My issue is with the height, and I think with the certified elevation. When we give...
Yeah, and I think that we can make certain conditions to make sure that everything is complied with. So, findings and conditions.
Okay.
Or do I take the motion first? Motion first to approve, then findings. So, does anybody have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. So, that's Ed. Is there a second?
I'll start with that.
And TJ? Okay.
All right. Testimony had this screened-in porch will be remain unheated, three-season porch. Testimony had that all staging of construction equipment will be on subject property.
And vehicles, right?
And vehicle, well...
I think that's...
Yep. That's good. All vehicles and construction.
And equipment.
Okay. That sounds good.
That they'll be applying for an amendment to COMCON?
Yes, and where did it go with regard to Board of Health? They'll have to buy off on, or have they, through conversation?
I'm sorry. What was that?
I mean, will they have to make an official Board of Health meeting?
Oh, no.
No.
No, the Board of Health will have to sign off prior to issuance of building permit.
Okay.
If not, it comes back to us.
So, that'll be a condition.
But he's, it's an existing septic system.
Yes.
So, the only thing that they have to do is put in that...
Vent.
That vent. And that vent's according to regulations, so.
Can that be a finding?
Oh, sure. It should be a finding that they're going to do that.
So, the finding would be, testimony had it that they will put, vent the leaching field system.
So, the requirement would be a vent.
Yes.
I wouldn't get into conditioning it. Where?
Well, that's out of our purview, right?
It is, yes.
Yes.
Any others, Mark?
Finding was attic will be unheated, uninhabitable, however accessible.
And accessed through hatches.
That's all I've got for now.
Okay. Finding notes, and the structure is going to be wholly located in the A-zone, and that it has to be elevated.
It has to meet regulations.
Has to meet regulations.
That's the easiest way to say it. That's why. Meet with regulations.
And the finding is that the height will be measured from the average grade prior to any fill, too, because...
That's all according to building, yeah.
Another finding, that was, did we already make that a finding with the elevation certification?
No.
Testimony had it that...
Testimony that there will be...
Right.
Submitted, yeah.
Prior to backfill or grade changes. Prior to backfill, sorry. Can you make a finding that there are two dwellings on this lot?
Yes.
And a special permit before the board previously acknowledged both dwellings?
Yes. I needed that.
So, we carry it forward?
So, that, yeah, that's a nonconformity, but it's...
That's why, that's one of the reasons why it's before us.
Anything else?
No, I was thinking about number of bedrooms, but they have septic for 10.
I would, I would make a finding that the septic system is for 10, but there would be, plans show four bedrooms in the new dwelling and three in the cottage.
Seven total. Seven total.
Not that you're going to condition it to seven, because...
Right.
Right. Okay. Anybody else? Any others? Okay. I think that's good. Mark, conditions?
Um...
Per plans?
Per plans...
Oh, finding 24216.
Yeah, 24216 in the findings. Very good.
So, per plans conditioned on COMCON's condition, or order of conditions.
This, this decision will be contingent on approval for changes as stated.
Modification.
And that the board should...
Modification of the order of...
Amended order of conditions. They call it amended. And that this board adopts those.
That's, okay. That's a condition.
I would like to condition as-built plans due to the height. Can we require as-built elevations or no?
Well, it has to be certified, so I would ask for the certification.
There should be.
Prior to, prior to issuance of the final inspection. Because they're not going to get a final inspection until that grade is changed. Because the building inspector, they should be checking that grade, I'm sure, to make sure that the runoff is right so prior to...
Okay.
Prior to final sign-off by building or zoning board of appeals.
Can I make another finding just to come back? That 243C's been met. It's not substantially more detrimental. So, other conditions would be...
Construction, traffic, and, or vehicles and equipment on site?
You said that.
That was a finding.
That was a finding. But we can condition that now.
I want to make it a condition.
Oh.
Testimony had it that they were...
Yes. Okay. So, that's going to be a condition as well.
So, that's a condition.
All staging of construction, vehicles, and equipment on subject property.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you want to, yeah, go ahead.
Are we going to condition the screened-in porch to remain unheated and, because it was a testimony?
You can. You can. You can condition that the screen porch be unheated.
Unheated and...
I mean, it should be conditioned that it remain a screened porch unless it's brought back to this board.
Yes.
Because screening should not have any windows.
That's correct. So, let's...
Should be screened.
We can do that. Screen only, and they have to come back to this board for any modification to the screening.
Including any window inserts.
All right.
Do you want to condition, I don't know if we need to condition the attic being uninhabitable?
Your findings substantiate that. Other plans.
Okay. And we're saying per plan.
Per plan, yeah.
And we don't, I, Suri, I'm asking, we don't need to condition that the certified building elevation certificate be obtained prior to change in grade?
No, it has to be prior to change in grade. Am I right?
That's a, that's a condition.
So, we don't have to condition it?
No. Right. You just condition that we get a copy of it.
Okay. Then let's condition that.
We get prior to final sign-off.
Perfect.
All right.
I think that's everything. Does anybody else have anything?
No. Sounds good.
Suri? Good. Mark? Okay.
I think, I think there should be a finding because the Westminster Road seems to be a contention, that there was testimony on, I don't know how we put it, just that Westminster Road is a private road. And any changes, alterations, or whatever you want to call it, are between the people that have rights to the private right and not part of this decision.
Right-of-passage, I think, was the term that was used.
Let's just leave it private.
Yeah.
Private way. Yes.
Because that's a civil matter, certainly not before this board.
Right.
Yes. Okay. So, that was, I believe, I forgot to write down, Ed and TJ?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And you didn't miss.
You're right on time.
Thank you. Well, we're a half hour behind.
Well, yeah, but, I mean...
And throw that in the... Okay, well, I should give these back to the clerk.
TJ? Thank you. I missed it. Thank you.
And these. He's going, or I lost files.
Did you get all the extra plans for the 40B? Are they there?
Yeah.
Three? Okay. Three of those.
Although these are dated October 7.
Well, I think only some of them are.
These, I think, are out.
TJ here.
Site planners. It's the only thing that changed.
Oh, these are the, yeah, these are the...
Architecture?
Yes. Thank you. All right. All right. So, the next application is also a continuation, number 9515 Village at Old Main, 41 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. And sitting on this is the regular voting numbers. Mr. Glenn?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman. So, we're here tonight with Mike Solomond of the Village at Old Main, at 41 Old Main Street in North Falmouth, Old Main Road. And we were here last month, and you asked if we could consider making some changes to the plans. And we have Mike Boselli is here. He can go over them. There are about six or seven changes that I think you asked for, and they've all been made. Also, there are a lot of regulatory documents that you asked for at the last meeting, and they've all been submitted. It's eight units, and I'm not sure, would you, if you have questions, would you like, Mike, to just start showing you the changes in the plans? That be the best way to do it?
I think that that would be helpful, certainly. And, and the clerk is going to read some of the submissions.
My apologies, Attorney General, for getting caught up here. Just to read in the record what we've received, received a draft condo master deed memorandum regarding the 40B application, correspondence between the application and the board...
Monitoring.
And a affordability monitoring service agreement.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, my name is Michael Boselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. We did make some changes to the plan subsequent to our initial hearing and the questions and matters that you raised. And I'll, you have revised plans. They were delivered Sunday, last Wednesday, actually. So, I'll go through the changes. First, the original plans showed the bulkheads on Unit 3 and Unit, 3B and Unit 5B, less than 10 feet from the property line. We made adjustments to those bulkheads, so they now conform to the minimum of 10-foot from a property line. So, all buildings on all sides meet all setback requirements of the Town of Falmouth zoning bylaw. We were asked to consider reducing the number of parking spaces. We eliminated the parking spaces from the center island. There were four, and it made this center island a larger, more wider, has a higher potential to be landscaped, so we eliminated those spaces. There's actually a net decrease in spaces of three. There's now 26. There were 29. Each unit has two spaces associated with it. The units that have a single-car garage also have a space counted within the garage. So, when considering the number of parking spaces on the site, I think it's important to realize that one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them are actually not in the parking area, but they're in the building. For reference, we added the neighboring houses and structures. The neighbor to the south, his house is here. The closest corners to our land are here. He also has a, an outbuilding or barn, not a dwelling, and we show that for reference. On the north side, we show that some of the, well, all the houses that are on this side, the closest part of it, part of the houses for reference. And if you recall, the back is the bike path, which is elevated from our site significantly. I think it was Board Member Forman asked us to show areas where the trees could be, remain. The darker green on these plans are the areas that we're proposing to retain the vegetation. We modified the site lighting. It's on the landscape plan. We had originally shown just the street lanterns. We've now added, to demonstrate that each building will have lighting at its entries in addition to the street lanterns, if you will, or lamp posts. in addition to the street lanterns, if you will, or lamp posts. And above each garage door, there'll also be a light. It'll probably be like an onion lamp style light that's, works with this architecture. We adjusted the location of one of the affordable units. If you recall, the existing single-family dwelling is going to be an affordable unit. Originally, this was proposed to be affordable. So unit 5B was originally proposed to be affordable as the second unit. It's been re-designated to unit 4A in this location. So the existing single-family dwelling is one, and unit 4A is the other.
I don't know what plan you're looking at.
November 25?
Still...
Those are colored ones.
Yeah. Which do show the changes, the landscape changes and so forth, but the 5B is still designated affordable on this one. What's, what's your date?
If you look at sheet, revised plan sheet one, that's a standalone landscape plan. We might not have a change on the landscape. But if it's standalone sheets, um...
Okay.
Affordable.
The actual site plan, the landscape plan, I'll make a note to fire my draftsman tomorrow.
Oh, fire him.
And finally, with regard to the landscape plan, there was a request to consider adding some shade trees to the property, which we also, we added a series of honeyhocus trees throughout the site in addition to the other trees. So they're scattered throughout the site, and they're designated with an L, the honeyhocus, there's several scattered throughout the site. And that summarizes the site plan changes. I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay, let me see if anybody has questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm answering. I had one more change. If you remember, we, we were hopeful we could keep this unit on its own septic system because of this bylaw. Didn't allow that, so this building is not connected into the concept here.
Paul, do you have any question?
No questions, thanks.
Ben? TJ?
I'd like to ask a quick question.
Okay.
Each unit will have the same amount of parking per unit, given the elimination of the parking spaces?
Yes.
Okay. Ken?
Well, I would come back to the request that you consider a denitrifying system, especially in view of the fact you have multiple houses so that the flows are likely to be at least somewhat continuous, and that you're in a sensitive area where, according to our coastal pond overlay by law, if you have five lots or more, and this is five, more than five units certainly, so in, in the spirit of that, you should have a denitrifying system.
We did consider that, Mr. Foreman, and we submitted a memo, and I think Mr. Glenn's here at the street court.
I, thank you. So Mr. Solomando is here. He has a new hip since he was here last, but he's the same person. He's been, I think, very cooperative. He's tried very hard, and he wants this to be, he wants to continue to be, cooperate with the town and make this a very good project. I submitted a one-page memo on the issue of nitrogen as part of it there. And technically, the bylaw doesn't even require it if this was not 40B. There aren't five lots, and there aren't more than five acres, you know, so, you know, that, that's a technical argument. But I, I think the more important argument is, it's just this is affordable housing. The, and normally, in, in your regulations, you have, would you supply a list of waivers that you're going to need from bylaws. It usually anticipates, and really, just about every, every affordable housing project looks for a lot of waivers. I think the only waiver we're looking for is more than one unit per lot. And the part about we think makes it nicer is instead of asphalt, we're going to have shells. Those are the only two things that really vary from the strict interpretation of the bylaws. It conforms with, it conforms with bulk regulations, and it conforms now with every side back and set regulations. We try to landscape it. They're going to be beautiful buildings, but just to try to keep the same street scene from over the road, he, he is willing to do a lot of landscaping that will do it, so he's trying real hard. So in the memo, and, and Mike is here tonight, he'll talk more about it, but in the memo, it, it, the, the budget for Title V for wastewater treatment there was $50,000. The best deal he could get in looking hard over a couple of weeks or three weeks is $80,000 additional to D-9. So I, I think that that, you go from 50 to 130, it just makes it, it just makes it uneconomic. And to impose that on something that doesn't technically even require it, if it wasn't affordable, is just an undue burden that you're putting on the, putting on the applicant here. And he's done the numbers. It's, uh, he just can't do it. He just can't do that, the nitrogen. I think Mike would like to talk, he's had experience, Mike Solomando, the applicant. He's had experience with actually installing these and seeing how they work. He'd like to talk to you about that, as well as the economic issue of the two. You know, I, I can talk more about it, but I, I think I put it in that memo. If you look at it, if you look at the, the whole idea of 40B, is you have to get some concessions from strict regulations if you're going to be able to build affordable housing. We understand it, you like it in other situations, but that's what makes housing in many ways unaffordable, complying with everything. So 40B is a means to come up with a good, reasonable plan, but it doesn't comply with every thing that you might like in an expensive home there. And I think we've done that, and I, I put in, I just made a short quote from the statute. The statute doesn't even mention, the, the only environment the statute is concerned about is the environment to the people that live in it. You know, if you don't have any open space, if you crunch them all together, that's the only, that's the only environment that the statute is, is concerned about there. The regulations mention environment, but they have to be weighed against a regional need for affordable housing. And it's necessary, and it's just consistent where there's a need for affordable housing, that you can't impose something that makes a project uneconomical, you know. So that, you know, that's my part of it. Mike would like, Mike, the applicant would...
So I do have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay.
And that's, I looked at the 40B fairly thoroughly.
Yeah.
And in section 21, it says it authorizes the ZBA to impose conditions in matters of clear local concern. And I think environmental, or environment is, is how you phrase it, but I think one of the clear local concerns of our community has been wastewater and water. And I think that's what, you know, Mr. Foreman is...
And it is, and it's very important. For a certain section of, of our town, it's, it's very, very important. But when you weigh it against the need for affordable housing, it's consistent that something distant from the development itself is an unreasonable, something that would have an impact away from the development would create an unreasonable burden on a developer to, to do that. You know, and I wonder what percentage of the houses in North Falmouth are on D-9? You know, I mean, I haven't done a...
No, there's no doubt that, that, that there aren't very many. And, but also, the density is significantly less, and it's the increase in density that prompts me to request that denitrification be considered. I mean, you know, following up on Mark's comment, we're, we're currently spending, as a community, $40 million to build sewers in just one of the, in the smallest of our coastal ponds.
So the, the request was definitely respected, and, and the applicant would like to talk to you about how much it costs and perhaps the effectiveness of it here, as far as the density goes.
I would also ask the applicant what the bid was, what type of system was looked at. So I'd be happy to hear that. I, I do believe there are, are good functioning systems out there now. Just one more rebuttal? I mean, I just, as a point of clarification,
Yeah, well, yeah.
Mass General Law 40B, section 20, the need to protect the health and safety of occupants, which you spoke of immediate, or residents of the town. So that kind of goes beyond the immediacy of the locale, I would think.
The idea of imposing a condition on affordable housing because it may have an impact on water beyond, well beyond this, it'd be consistently rejected, consistently rejected. It is an unreasonable regulation to, to do that. There have been cases where somebody crammed so much on it that there was no open space. Our project here complies with the bulk reg, not the bulk reg, the law coverage regulations for the town of Falmouth. We're not even looking for a waiver for that. So it's not unduly, it's not unduly dense. Most affordable housing developments look for that waiver. How else can you do it? You need a waiver from the law coverage to, to build affordable housing. But just, it's consistent to put a regulation to protect an interest beyond that project. It just can consistently reject it. And, and, you know, I think the applicant will convince you that you just can't do it. We didn't, we showed the, we showed the request great respect before it was even made, and then tried again after it was made. It just, that the extra $80,000 or more, or, or more, you know, that's where you start, if nothing goes wrong and there are runs. It just makes, it just kills the project. And that's what the affordable housing statute is about. And technically, even if this, if this were allowed under zoning, it, it's not five lots, and it's not five acres. And it, there is more density than one house on a two, this is a two-wake a lot. You know, there is more density than three bedrooms on two wakeers, but they're, they're, to start imposing a D-9 requirement here when the neighbors don't have that, it's just an unreasonable, it's just an unreasonable regulation. It is my argument. But I think I'd rather you look at it from just the practical point of view. Don't you want this built? This is a very nice project. These are very nice houses. It, it's going to create a couple of affordable housing, probably for families, that it's necessary, and that's what it's about.
Okay, so let's hear from Mike.
I just wanted to add one thing for your consideration about that bylaw, about five acres or five, or five lots. Just north of this property on Old Main Road, by that I mean less than a quarter of a mile, a coastal subdivision was reviewed by the planning board for nine lots, and it was in excess of five acres. And I represented the applicant on that case, and we, we're in a coastal pond overlay district. But if you look at the coastal pond overlay district maps throughout the town of Falmouth, virtually, almost the entire town's in a coastal pond overlay district in one way or another. The south-facing ponds are the most critically, most sensitive ones. That's why we're searing. That planning board decision on that nine-lot subdivision, we were able to persuade them that, and they made a finding in the decision that the location of this land and the geology relative to coastal ponds, combined with its distance from the coast, and the fact that it was very densely developed. In fact, the New Silver Beach wastewater treatment plant is upstream of this location. They made a finding that the groundwater quality was not as, as sensitive to nitrogen, in their opinion. And they, they made a finding that D-9s weren't necessary on that actual nine-lot subdivision, which wasn't even a 40B. So there's another board in town that understands the groundwater conditions in this region and made a decision where they, they could have required it, that they didn't require it. I just thought that would be important to know.
Thank you, Mike. If the applicant wanted to speak, let me see if there's questions.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Mike Solomando. And to approach Mr. Foreman, you know, I understand this was done on the FAST system. And I just got, I just have direct knowledge of this because where I live now in, which is the project I just completed, and it's a bigger system because there, there's more units in this particular one, so it's bigger. And it was, you know, it was $80,000 to buy another, another, it was approximately, almost, by the time we got through with everything, it was around, around, around 40, 40-something thousand additional just to do the install and attach it to the existing set of leaching fields, and that included. But it's not only just that cost, not those I could spread over 14 units. And the units ranged, it ranged from $700,000 to $1 million. They're a bigger unit. We could absorb that, and we had no affordables on site. The affordables in that particular one, I could, I could do off, it wasn't a 40B, by the way, but it was a self, not a self-imposed, but a town, a friendly 40, so to speak, where we could do it on site because we were on a barrier beach, all right, in, in a little village called Hammerock off the coast of Marshville, part of Situate. So we did it in the main, we did the affordables on the main, on the, the main part of Situate, closer to the schools and that type of thing. But the cost was, I, I was like, you know, I was stunned, to be honest with you, because I hadn't done one of those before. But that was, again, that was approved back in, that was approved in those, in 2010 is when we got the approvals and we went into the system. And, and things have, you're right, Mr. Foreman, things have changed, and they are getting, they are getting better as more and more things become online. But the problem that we have here in, in, on an eight-unit 40B is there's only really six units. You're not spreading this cost over, you're not spreading it over eight units. You're really spreading it over six. And I know you, when, when the board sees it, well, there's eight units. But the cost, I mean, the first unit, the units, we lose money on, on the affordables, which you're supposed to do, all right? But you don't like to, you like to lose as little as you can. But what we, you know, what we have is, I got to spread that cost over six units. And for me, that's, that's, that's close to $15,000 per unit. I mean, it, it's thin as it is because they got, you know, there's, I'm lucky in that I'm the builder as well as the developer. So there's only certain averages where you can take the profit out. But, and, you know, because of the location of the land and everything, but there's at least, it's a good, it's a good project. And, and I, I think it's, you know, and it, and it can be good. It's not going to be a huge moneymaker by any means. And this is kind of like, just really, you know, takes it apart by, by that much of a...
So, so can I ask you a little about this quote? Because I, is this the item that you submitted?
Yes.
So, so this shows $77,000, I think, is the cost?
Well, with the taxes and everything, I think it's almost 79.
So, but is this the total cost, or is this additional?
That's additional.
Because the implication from, because what I'm reading is a one 5,000, I presume, gallon primary septic tank, which sounds to me like the part of the... I presume, gallon primary septic tank, uh, which sounds to me like the part of the standard Title V.
Standard Title, right, but that's wrong and it's, I mean, that was wrong, I don't know why, because maybe he didn't know all the different bedrooms, because the real count should be, it should be a six-thousand gallon tank. I saw that too and I, and I did catch that. And that was, that's a seven-thousand dollar, that's probably a seven, seventy-five instead of, so the difference may be about three or four thousand, but that's it.
Right, but, so I'm just saying, to me, that sounds like it's part of the-
Yeah, but it isn't-
Standard Title V system.
I was trying to check with Ted on that very item, but he won't, believe it or not, he went into hip surgery. Ted, I was trying to call him because I, and I did pick up on that, but he's been out of commission and I haven't been able to check back.
And this is just one type of system, right? I mean, there are other systems out there.
There are many types. And the cost, but I'm giving you my firsthand knowledge on the one that I know. There are cheaper ones, there are much more expensive ones. This is kind of, FAST system is kind of the middle of the road. But also, it's not only this cost here, but to continue to run them, our bill, okay, and I'm sure that this would be, it costs over, it's a three-hundred-dollar junk on the, on the electrical, on our, on our outside electric a month, all right, as well as we have to have an inspection, okay, and the inspection's a fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred-and-seventy-five bucks for twice, twice a year inspection that requires, and then any general maintenance that has to go into it. Although ours is fairly new, we haven't had any maintenance, to be truthful with you. But it's still, it's still another fifteen-hundred that goes on the HOA. It's another three-hundred a month for the, on the HOA's back. I mean, that's all goes, it's, you know, it's expensive. And then where do you put the fan? And it muffles the sound. It's a, because those fans, well, there are, there are newer ones, there are new, there are newer systems that you can get, but these are the more expensive ones, all right, that the fans only go on intermittently, all right? But the ones that run twenty-four, seven, burn and allow.
So I, I mean, just as contrast, and I have no idea about cost, but there's a three-thousand gallon per day, or gallon system that I know, nitrate-based system, which our county health department has been monitoring in Mashpee, that achieves better nitrogen reduction than our centralized wastewater treatment facility here. And that is in a similar situation where there's a number of residences hooked up to it that, so there's a system that's in place, operating. So I know there are examples of such systems in place that are working and that have been installed, and I presume they must be somewhat economic or they wouldn't have been installed in the first place, so.
I don't know. I'm just telling you what my numbers are. I can only tell you what I know.
But again, this is one, one quote.
This is one quote. You asked me to give you, I gave you, I didn't give you the most expensive-
Nope, I appreciate that.
And I didn't give you the cheapest. I said, I want something that's dead in the middle. That's what I asked Ted for, and that's, that's what it is. But it's considerably higher than what I-
So are you saying that if, if, that the project could not go forward if this was required?
It makes me think of saying, you know, doing something else. Let me tell you, it's, it's, like I said, it's, you're making money, you're making money on six units, all right, and you're gonna build out the other ones. So it's, it's, there's a point of diminishing returns, so it's something that you cut away. That's the best I can do for the board. You know, bend over backwards to make it right, make it good, but, I mean, there comes a point where, you know what, if this was on a bigger project and you can spread that cost over more, it makes, it makes good sense, especially where I was, in, on a barrier beach, all right, where we're nothing but sand and we've got a river on one side in a, in coastal zone management and I had a lot of people that went in that I worked with on it, and they were pretty happy, but I, I was, I was shocked at the bottom number. But now, not only that, is I got the HOA that I still run today. As a matter of fact, this is my last month, thank God, after three years of running it, that I get to step down, but, and then you see the jump in the cost in the electrical. And people care about those things. I'm just telling you exactly what it's in all, Mr. Foreman, and that's what we came up with.
The existing building?
Yes, sir.
How much renovation is occurring in there?
We're gonna do the whole outside skin and keep it in compliance. I've got some, I mean, it's, the guy, it was, it's beautiful the building inside, and it has a walkout basement that can be, you know, for future, for future use.
I know you mentioned that, yeah.
It's, it's pretty nice. The guy was a cabinet maker who had it. So I'm gonna update the, the heating system's already started to be updated and put in air conditioning system and pretty much into the entire outside.
So that, that's at least one, one thing that helps you out is you have an existing structure.
That's right, yeah. But I paid a lot for the land.
Okay, well, that's my primary concern.
Okay. You also have questions then?
At the moment, yep.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I'll ask Mike Scully some stuff, I think.
Okay.
Mike, you're, did you happen to see the Patty Delaney Cape Cod Commission report in the file?
I read it, I, I did read it.
The only reason I bring it up is, is she says in it, "Project site is located within a sub maintenance requiring fifty-six percent nitrogen removal, require significant nitrogen loading reduction from new and existing developments." So my question then is, the proposed system, will it reduce and not add nitrogen loading to that area?
I said, no, that it will, it will not do what you just said. It will not reduce.
It won't reduce. Will it, will it neutralize or will there be any input?
There'll be nitrogen loading into the ground and it's, it's-
Would a, would a D-night system do that? No, right?
No, a D-night system will just reduce it. It doesn't denitrify it. The recognized levels of treatment for, like a traditional Title V are like thirty to thirty-five milligrams per liter and the recognized, um, productions, they vary, but there's assumptions when you do nitrogen loading calculations for a project that nitrogen across the board reduction systems reduce it to nineteen. But we all know that there's better results than that. I, I do think you also need to consider, and I know every site's different, but you just, you just approved an eleven-unit Forty B in a coastal pond overlay district only once over, not too long ago. And there's no D-night on that. So I know, I know every site's different, but I think it's important to listen to what the planning blitz funding were, right basically next door as well, so.
That's all I have right now.
Was that eleven unit? What percent affordable was that?
One hundred percent.
Okay. Well, if the applicant would care to make this a hundred percent affordable, I would be happy to-
The environment doesn't know what is affordable.
No, you're right, you're right, you're right. So that is where, using Mr. Glenn's arguments, I would say there are trade-offs. But in this case, we have six market rate units and two affordables. And I think the environment still needs to be considered.
I just think you need to listen to what the town planning board had.
Mike, I have one more. The significance of reading the October fifteenth apartment input letter, Scott Schusler?
Schler, yep.
He said that the test pit shows groundwater potentially being at six foot below existing grade. What, what significance does that have on the system that you're proposing?
Well, we did the test hole, we did test holes, a series of test holes, because you want to know where the groundwater table is. And there's a minimum separation from that, that's why we do them. And we dug at that test hole, it's the, it's the shallow, it's the lowest point on the lot, it's sort of our minimum design standard. So we have to provide a minimum of five feet separation from that.
Okay.
And that's what we, I don't really know why he just made that just statement, but we provide all the required separations.
All right, yeah, that, that was kind of like, well, six foot, so.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. That's all.
Yes, sir. Okay. Sorry, do you have any questions?
No.
No, okay. I have just a couple of questions, I guess, of attorney Glenn. It might just be one question or two, um, or three. You submitted the master deed. Are you also planning on submitting the declaration of trust?
To the board before he-
Yes.
I wasn't planning on it.
Okay. So is that, do you usually require, I know you said condo docs, just the master deed?
You said master deed and the monitoring agreement, regulatory agreement-
Okay.
Are the main things that the board, we want to know who the monitoring agent is.
Right.
We want to know what the master deed says about in perpetuity for the ratio of the affordable versus the market rates, things like that.
Okay.
And one change since we were here, we've been in contact with Falmouth Housing Trust and, no, they weren't, they are not at this point approved by Mass Housing to do the monitoring. That's why we originally went with another organization, but they're working on that and they'll have it done way before, way before the, any houses would be complete. So we're gonna work with Falmouth Housing Trust to be the monitoring agent to make sure that the homes stay affordable.
It's nice to have it local and a good organization.
I'm sorry, was that a change from what you had before?
Yeah, I think you suggested it and I think you suggested it, so I, and that's what, I was told that they weren't eligible, they weren't on the list that they could do that, or I would have called them right away. But the executive director, she's called up Mass Housing and she's filled whatever application she needs to, to be on their approval list.
Oh, excellent.
And she doesn't seem to think there'll be any problem to-
They do monitor other projects in town.
Good.
Okay. Um, just a question for you with regard to, I think you said that if, and I might, I don't want to misquote you, I'm, I won't quote you, I guess, but you said that impacts such as these with the denitrification system, obviously member Cool and member Foreman are concerned about this. And you said that concerns such as these have been consistently rejected. Would you, if, because I would like to see the law on that, I know that you cited to the provision, but would you be willing, if we continued this or if we closed or, well, I guess we'd have to continue it, to submit a memo substantiating that, that position?
Cases.
Yeah.
Now, there may not be one exactly on denitrification because this is something that hasn't been required before, so why would there be a bar on, on that?
Right.
But consistently those, I can, I just assume not, you know, would like to get working, but I could do that. There was a point where I think I could tell you every case on Forty B, but there've been so many of them in the last ten years, I can't do that anymore. But they are out there and a lot of them, people, people, town, people, the environment, had a much stronger interest in that. And it's consistent where the town hasn't met its threshold of affordable housing, that when you weigh the need for housing versus this environmental need, the housing wins. That's what I mean, consistent. So I won't, I'm sure I won't, I doubt I'll be able to find one on nitrogen.
Right.
But there'll, there'll be other concerns like that and, and that's what I see.
Well, I think that there might, and I, and I breeze through it, so I don't even think, but there was a recent Forty B decision involving a board taking some other considerations into account, so I think that might shed some light, and the name's escaping me right now, but-
You mean the economic viability of the project?
Yes.
Yes, I have a couple.
But a really recent decision within the last couple of months that might, I'm recalling.
We'd rather the board make the decision on just the practicality of it and this is a good project, but I, I could do that if the board would just say, this is what the law says.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, I could, that, that isn't my main argument. I think this is a very good project and it should be approved just because, because of that.
Right. Landscaping, I just had some questions. Obviously, it's been approved. Are, you're proposing arborvitae along the property line, is that true?
Here's Mr. landscaper.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Paul Skarsky.
Hi.
The arborvitae that we're talking about is, it's called Thuya placata, which is giant western arborvitae, which turns into a very large tree. It's not a, an upright, festigant or columnar plant. It has a, in fact, there's a, there's one on Elm Road that's about sixty feet and it's about fifty feet across. And out, you know, out west, they get, the trucks get from me to you, enormous.
Okay.
So it's a tree that, and there's some variable varieties that have different types of foliage colors. So we have the ability to plant a number of those particular plants because they're insect resistant, the deer don't like them, they are really solid growers, you don't need pesticides or anything to have them. And once they're established, you look the other way. And they do get large and they're not like, as you had said, I think in the last hearing, like your grandfather's arborvitae hedge, it's a, they're real trees. So if that answers that question.
It does, yep. And then just lawn proposed and then you centered where the, the parking spaces have been removed?
No, that's gonna be a, like a raised berm planting with some trees in it, grasses, perennials, you know, all low, low-care, high-yield plants.
Okay.
Relative to the plant list that we submitted.
Okay.
In fact, exactly like the plant list we submitted. The Thuya placata, I'd change, I'd switch a couple of varieties as some that are within that, that have different characters to them.
Okay. All right. That was all my questions. You're good? Everybody else is satisfied?
I could ask one other, which is since the bike path is right there, is there any proposed access to the bike path?
Yeah, I'll let Mike address that.
You said that it's, there's a substantial grade, so.
We talked about that, Mr. Solomando and I, in the beginning. We recognize there's a challenging grade. In fact-
The elevation of the pavement on the bike path is kind of thirty-three. The average grade on our property is twenty-four, twenty-five. So I know, I know the bike path's used for motorbikes. We talked about building a set of stairs with landings up to it so you could get to it. It's in, anything that you do like that, you'd have to go to the state to get permission to put a structure in there. So it's not real easy to do. So we considered it and then we considered that not too far away, there's easier access like Winslow Road, there's a connection to the bike path that you could, you could bike relatively safely to. I suppose you could walk up Old Main Road to it too. But we kind of sided against it in the beginning because of the challenge of getting up to it.
Okay.
All right. So let me see if anybody's here to speak in favor of this project, in opposition to this project. Okay, let's have some board discussion, I think, because, without closing, because I want to hear, obviously you both have questions about the denitrification system.
Mark, you want to go first?
I'm on the fence about, because a critical local concern is, and it's in the local comprehensive plan, is, is the coastal waterways and estuaries and wastewater and things like that. And just as important and critical, there's another local comprehensive element that involves affordable housing. So whether it's reasonable or not, that's what the board has to contend with. And I think it's, even though the local comprehensive plan isn't a regulatory tool, I think, you know, the, the, the planning vision has to be taken into consideration. And so that's why I'm trying to figure out, knowing what the Cape Cod Commission said about, you know, in new and existing developments, there should be consideration of reductions. And Mike's testimony had it that the present proposed system isn't going to reduce, and you're, you're going against, as far as I'm concerned, you're going against potentially an element of your local comprehensive plan. an element of your local comprehensive plan. I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, I, I'm for affordable housing, I think we need it, but then you have to give due respect to other goals and that, that the town, the community has set out there, so.
Do you have any other concerns about that? Is that your primary concern?
That's, that's the, everything else looks wonderful. I mean, he, the, the two, the two 4068B compliance, he brought the bulkheads back. I mean, that's, that's wonderful. And, you know, the, the loss of two parking, or the three parking spaces, wonderful, you know, but geez, you know, as a board, I think we're charged with considering all aspects. And one of the aspects that is dear to me in addition to affordable housing is wastewater. And it's, you know, it drives tourism, the quality of our water systems here. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, so, you know, I, I agree with Mark, perhaps even a little more stridently. I don't think I can vote for this unless there's a denitrifying system. I believe that, you know, we've only seen one quotation. I think there's many systems out there. Actually, the George Troyfelder, the county, the Barnstable County Health Officer has shown, done a great study where he's shown which ones seem to work well and which ones work less well. We're spending as a community, tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars on this problem, and I just don't think it can be ignored. We can't keep finding excuses for not controlling nitrogen inputs to coastal, to these sensitive coastal embayments. And I believe that the two are not incompatible. I just, I think there must be some ways to economize within this project so that this could be affordable.
Do you have any other concerns?
I, in all other respects, I think the applicant has, has listened very nicely to us and responded well. I think the flow actually works better without all those parking spots in the middle island. It's great that he was able to pull back so that we don't have the nonconformities, so. Landscaping certainly, you know, it's nice to see that there is indeed a plan, so. So otherwise, you know, I think it's a good, good project.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak on it? Paul?
Yeah, I mean, I understand the concerns with the D-Nite system, no question about it. But some, I'm pretty sure that if, I mean, if we, if this fails, if this doesn't carry due to the denitrification system, and this is, this project is denied, it'll go to the Housing Appeals Committee, and they'll, they'll overturn that decision. That I, that I know for sure. I don't think that a denitrification system is going to be a watershed moment up at the Housing Appeals Committee. So, I mean, we can either, you know, I mean, it'll be back before us again, or the developer could do something different. Those are just my thoughts on it. I, I think it's a great project, and I think also, D-Nite systems have to be monitored, you know, and they're not, they're not the magic bullet either. But, you know, I'm a Title V inspector, but I'm not an authority on denitrifying systems. But I, I do see a lot of this stuff go up to the Housing Appeals Committee, and 95% of the time, it's overturned. But, so, I mean, if we, those are my thoughts. And if we want to put the developer through that, through a vote, that's fine. But I just think that, you know, we're going to run this, run into some hard luck up in Boston.
Ed?
I think it's a great project, and it meets the intent of the bylaw. And I think that, I'm not an expert on the nitrogen subject, but I kind of got the impression it will wash, whether it's going to make it any worse or any better, you know?
Okay.
It's I'd vote for.
TJ?
Well, I'm happy that the applicant got the, the bulkheads to meet the setbacks. And the site as it is, it is densely wooded, so I appreciate the update, especially with the testimony that was given tonight with the arborvitae. It's the sort of species that will fill in well with the site. I think the applicant listened to us last meeting, listened to our concerns. As far as the denitrification system goes, I'm a little on the fence about it, because it's, the site as it is, it's not within Conservation Commission jurisdiction. I do realize it is in the overlay district. If the applicant were to install the denitrification, testimony also had it that some of that cost would be passed on to the homeowners. And not forgetting this is a 40B project, it would be passed on to the people in the subsidized housing as well. So a little on the fence about it.
Okay. I too am, I guess, I suppose, on the fence about it as well. Just as to the denitrification system, obviously, we only received one quote, and we were told that more were obtained, so I think it might be helpful to receive other quotes. Testimony certainly was that it would become uneconomical. I would like to see the calculations and what that does to the bottom line. And I know that's something that we've wanted to see in previous 40B projects. And then really, I, I mean, and I'm sure we all do this, that we make decisions based on what we think the law is, and, and that's really my primary concern. So if this is a concern, and it's something I, I would like to see case law on it, this is a real concern, and this is a concern for the town. And certainly, we understand affordable, or I understand affordable housing is also a real concern in town. But it is our obligation to balance those concerns. And I don't think that the mere fact that it will be, you know, appealed is justification to, to make a decision that the developer wants us to make, or, you know, that overlooks some other, some other aspects of the project. So, and, and it might be that, you know, I, I get a memo, and the legal memo says, you know, this absolutely won't override. And if that's the case, then, then that's the case. And, but it's just something that I would like to say prior to making a decision. And I know TJ said he's on the fence. Ken, you said you wouldn't vote for it.
I can't vote for it unless, unless that's included. I would love to see the applicant's rep, you know, maybe Mr. Borselli come back with some, some guidance on, you know, based on some of the work that's been done at the county level on what the best system might be. I know the efficacy is much higher than 19 milligrams per liter. I've seen five milligrams per liter. I was personally up at the Mass Alternative Septic System Test Center and measured one system at half a milligram per liter, which is, you know, so.
Let's make one, I want to make sure I wasn't misrepresented in what I said. There's no question, most of the systems treat better than 19. But when you go through calculations, what's recognized by DEP as treatment in general is 19. I know that there's local systems that are doing much better than that.
Right.
And also, I'm not against D-Nite. I just think you need to consider it globally and think about other, the surrounding environment and the fact that there's, there's many substandard septic systems in and around this area.
Right, but, that's right. But it's, it's death by a thousand cuts, because we always, the excuse for not doing it is always that, you know, it's not being done. And as a result, we can go to the Little Pond Watershed and look at a 40-plus million-dollar project where each homeowner has to pony up 30,000 bucks to tie into a sewer system. And all that's happening is that wastewater is being moved to a different part of town, which also has sensitive embayments, being treated to some level, but it's going to have impacts in that area. So, you know, we, we need to deal with these problems on the sites.
Okay.
When we can. And this is an example of when we can.
Attorney Glenn? Yeah, sure. I think everybody's said kind of where they are, so, sure.
So if the, the choice of coming back with more facts and more law is much better than the alternative, I think, for everybody there. So that's one thing. And, and just on this issue, if you go to environmental conference, this is what everybody talks about, the environment. They just get through an affordable housing conference up at Boston this week, it was front page of the Globe writing about it. And they comment upon the environmental conferences, and the conclusion is, it's just used as a way to prevent affordable housing. You know, they're both extreme situations. I would call that extreme, you know? There is a balancing. So we'll come back, and maybe there are some facts that can convince you that this is uneconomic. But, you know, I think that's an understatement. It won't be a watershed moment at the Housing Appeals Committee. It just won't. The idea of here is a, here's a new, it's pretty new and valid, that you'd be imposing on an affordable housing development that hasn't been imposed on other ones. It just, that's quite a, this is quite a jump to impose this type of burden on it. And I can come up and, you know, I can come up and, with the case law and the Housing Appeals Committee decisions. And they'll, you'll see the consistency, that you see it from the one point of view, the nitrogen, I want the clean water. Other people could care less. I just want a house. You know? And that's just people, you know, we're dirty polluting beings. And, and when you, when you weigh it, when the Housing Appeals Committee weighs it, they're for the housing. It just, you know, that, that's what it is. And we try to balance this. Real well, a project with no, with no waivers, really, is, is as good as it gets. You're imposing something that wouldn't be imposed, you're, you're thinking of imposing something that wouldn't be imposed in market rate situation. A little bit of a technical argument, but that's okay. You know, I can make a technical argument on it. This is not five acres, it's not five lots.
But in a market rate situation, you wouldn't have eight units on two acres.
We wouldn't.
So if you had eight units on eight acres in a subdivision, that would be different.
I, I mean, a, a more typical thing would be like 16 units here, and then the D-Nite. That'd be a typical 40B, you know? And this one fits into the neighborhood nice. So there are a lot of different types of neighborhoods. You know, there's the neighborhood and the immediate neighborhood, that people will like this, and it's still creating affordable housing. And I understand D-Nite, denitrification is real important, but it's not the only thing. You know, that's what we're hung up now, it seems, but that's not the only thing that's important. So, I mean, we, we can do that to, to try to convince you more that this is a good project, and it just is going to make it uneconomical if you, if you impose that condition on it. And I can come up with the case law that says, with the limits of impositions can be.
Okay. I think that that would be helpful, and you certainly heard what our concerns were. So I think that would be helpful.
So you also want quotes on other systems, but the quotes should include.
Yeah, well.
The yearly cost, Paul. They should include what the monthly, their quarterly monitoring is, the light exchange, everything, to get a full thing of what the board wants to see, the full cost that affects the project. Because on top of the 80,000 that he's saying, I think he put it in there, there's a monitoring fee that's done quarterly.
Right.
For three years, and then I think.
$50 a month for the affordable people, too.
Right. But I'm just saying, they're asking you for that information, so don't forget that facet of it.
No.
To show the overall cost effect.
Yeah, because you were asking for a breakdown on the cost.
Right.
Yeah, I just would like to see.
So I think that, that needs to be part of it, for sure.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, so continuation date will be in February. I have every week in January. You guys have hearings every week, and they're already full.
Well, what about, I was going to say, what about the 14th?
The 14th is wind turbines.
Yes. Well, we, we've narrowed this down to denitrification system. We're going to have the, the information submitted to us in advance.
Well, I mean, above and beyond that.
Remember, this is a three to two vote as well.
But I'd like to see case law where it's put before whoever the deciding judicial system is, where one local critical concern is put up against another.
What they're going to look at, they're going to look at what's in the zoning, what they asked for waiver. It is not in the zoning that a denitrification system is required for this 40B project. They're going to weigh that, and they're going to weigh the cost of things.
There was a.
I, myself, like Paul, haven't seen anything on a D-Nite system. So any case law you're going to get is going to be based on economical feasibility of the project and the demands that the board is putting on somebody, and they'll weigh that.
Yeah, there was that recent decision, though, and I wish.
It's not about D-Nite.
Well, I think January 14th sounds.
The mere fact that it's not about D-Nite doesn't mean that it wouldn't have applicability to the situation.
No, I didn't say that. I said the case law that he's going to get is going to be based on economical feasibility, because I haven't seen one for D-Nite.
Right.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Right.
Same thing.
So what day did you start on?
I, I think your idea of the 14th of January is fine.
I.
By that time, where, where will we be?
I told the town that we wouldn't have any hearings on the 14th because of what we ran into last week, because they've got representatives coming and talking.
Well, that's why I was just going to ask. So who's coming at that? Do we know? I know that we have the sound experts coming.
We got a couple of experts coming. I'm not quite sure, because I'm not privy to all the attorney conversations. We find out later. But I told them that, that date would be set aside. So if you want to start at 5:30 and do them, from 5:30 to 6:30.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So we'll do that.
Is that giving you enough time?
I, I think so. There's not time to waste, but I, I think that gives us enough time, you know? Well, I prefer that.
It's going to be a little over a month.
Like a two-month extension, you know, when.
This is 180-day process, so we don't need an extension unless.
No, but I mean, a two-month continuance from here would be, would be tough. So January, we'd prefer January, yeah.
So January 14th at 5:30. If the board wants to make that motion and vote.
I would move that we continue the hearing on this 40B project to January 14th at 5:30 here in Town Hall.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we'll say, Ken and Ed, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Would it be, are we narrowed to that issue? Do we have to bring the landscape architect and the?
I don't think that would be necessary.
And all the other things. We'll bring plants so you can see it, but, okay.
Paul, can you have that stuff in the office a week in advance?
I will.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. And let's take a quick break.
Thank you.